Welcome everyone to the April 12th City Council Meeting. Welcome to everyone at home and those who are here. We're going to start out this evening with a couple ceremonial matters. And the first item for ceremonial matters is the Public Service Recognition Week. Each year, the President and Congress designate the first full week of May, which is coming up, to honor the men and women who serve America as federal, state, county, and local government employees. And so it's our chance to honor some of the folks who work for us all over this community. I have a proclamation to read. Whereas Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels, these unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. And whereas public employees take not only jobs but oaths, and whereas many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, Border Patrol officers, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas public servants include teachers, doctors and scientists, trained conductors and astronauts, nurses and safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations. And whereas, day in and day out, public servants provide diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly requires its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, Kitty Pearcy, Mayor of the City of Eugene, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 4th through Monday, May 10th, 2010, as Public Service Recognition Week. And I encourage all our citizens to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. So thank you all, our public employees. Let's give them a hand. The second item up is a very exciting item. It is in celebration of National Library Week and a presentation from the Library Foundation. Tonight, we take a moment to celebrate National Library Week. Many of us remember the libraries of our childhood with fondness and a deep appreciation for the difference they make in the course of our lives. The role libraries play in our lives is growing. They are an essential service to meeting the needs of many of our citizens. The awareness of what an important asset the library is to our community makes us so committed to supporting Eugene's public library's excellent services. Keith Richards has said, quote, "When you are growing up, there are two institutional places that affect you most powerfully: the church, which belongs to God, and the public library, which belongs to you." The public library is a great equalizer, unquote. Eugene's public library slogan, "A universe of ideas and information," speaks directly to that opportunity, to the opportunity that libraries offer to everyone of all ages, backgrounds, interests, and viewpoints. Year in and year out, and especially in the hard times we've been experiencing, Eugene Public Library provides so much to so many. Need unbiased consumer information? Go to the library. Need a fun, healthy, and free place to spend time with your kids? Check out the library. Need to get access to social services or benefits? How about help with your job search? All at the library. On top of all that, studies have shown that public libraries are a positive driver of local economies, returning four to six dollars for every dollar taxpayers invest in them. Public libraries inform, inspire, nourish innovation, build communities, preserve the past, and improve the future. The library is essential to the health of our community. Thank you for joining me and the dedicated staff, volunteers, and supporters of the Eugene Public Library in celebrating National Library Week this year. So let's give a hand for that. And this week is perfect timing for another special celebration and honor. The Eugene Public Library Foundation is dedicated to raising funds to support the Eugene Public Library. Tonight, Jim Olney, the Executive Director, is here to present a contribution of...
$100,000.
Yes.
From donors of the Library Foundation.
Thank you. He has to, I have to ask his pardon that he has to sit in a chair at our lower mic because the other mic is not working. So everybody who comes to speak tonight is going to have to come and sit just where you're sitting.
It's a comfortable chair.
We just appreciate you being here so much. This is a gift that strengthens the library's collection, which is vital to the library to provide people in Eugene with the access to a universe of ideas and information. We just thank you so much, and we'd like to hear a few words from you. And I'll come down and get the chair.
Thank you, Mayor Pearcy, and members of the City Council. The Eugene Public Library Foundation has been around for 25 years and has raised almost $7 million over those 25 years to support the Eugene Public Library system, and we're very proud to do that. This year's contribution, we were going to get a big check, this is about as big as we could make it, of $100,000.
Wonderful.
And we're really proud to do that because of the partnership that the foundation has with the City of Eugene and especially the public library. We really want to build a community where the library is such a central revitalization of the downtown, and literacy is an idea that everybody wants to deal with. And I think it's so important for our school system and for our futures. And our Library Foundation is committed to supporting the library and getting those things done for the future of Eugene, and really is proud of the partnership they have with the City Council because we're all trying to achieve the same goals. So we're happy to make this $100,000 contribution, and we're very happy to continue the partnership. This is a contribution we've made the last three years, $100,000. We hope to continue to do that as long as we can exist. So we thank you for your help as well.
So I'm not going to move on to the community forum part without giving you all a chance to make some comments in response to this if you would like to. Anybody?
Well, Mayor, my light's not working, so I don't know if I'm on or not. But I just want to thank, thank you for acknowledging both of the folks that brought us forth. I think it's very important that we talk about people who work in public service because I don't think that people realize the amount of personal capital after, I've been in office five years, and it takes a toll on you being out in the public eye. And so I can't imagine doing that for a living where you're always under the scrutiny of the public, even though we are the public too, as Dritz would say. We were just commenting that Dritz, we stole your Eugene idea, and we're going to have Eugene awards. But I just really think that it was great. And I want to thank the library also for donating that money. I think it's, especially now, so many people are using the library. I can't tell you how often I hear people saying that they go to the library, they have such comprehensive programs there that it's really being taken advantage by the community. Thank you both.
Thank you, Council Ortiz. Anyone else have any comments? I can't, don't see any on my, well, so on behalf of all of us, again, thank you so much for the service our public employees provide, and thank you so much to the Library Foundation. We are so fortunate to have you. Thank you so much. Okay. We're going to move on to the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the City Council on any city-related issues, except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person will have three minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. A timer and lights indicate the time, if they work, indicate the time you have to speak. A yellow light will come on when you have 15 seconds to complete your comments. The red light indicates the end of three minutes. I'm hoping it'll all go along well. We have, I think, 13 people signed up for the public forum tonight. We'll start out with Bob Richards, followed by Lauren Sears. Bob?
My name is Bob Richards, Director of Buckley Center here in Eugene, 605 West Fourth. I'm here tonight to talk to you about an approaching funding problem for Buckley Center. At Buckley Center, we not only provide medical detoxification services, but also crisis triage, referral, and sobering services for the community. As many of you may remember, two years ago, our funding was cut by nearly 40 percent. That funding was dedicated to sobering services and two community corrections detoxification beds. Both of those services are critical to the public safety of Eugene. Without the availability of sobering services, Eugene Police, cahoots, and other referring agencies will have nowhere to take intoxicated individuals after removing them from the streets and parks. The jail won't take them. Those of you who were on the council at that time will also remember that the City of Eugene and Lane County agreed to a revenue swap that greatly benefited both jurisdictions. From that swap, our funding was restored through June 30th, 2010. And once again, I wish to thank you for that effort. Unfortunately, that funding will cease on June 30th. Obviously, if we're to continue providing these critical services, we will need to find revenues to replace the loss. There are several groups discussing serial levies that may include funding for detoxification and sobering services. Unfortunately, even if we are included in that serial levy, the earliest it could appear on the ballot appears to be next November. It is my understanding that even with a successful ballot measure, and I emphasize "successful," the revenue generated would not be available until late 2011 at the earliest. Obviously, that would be far too late to cover the loss we will experience at the end of this coming June. That is why I'm approaching all of the local jurisdictions so early in the year. We simply need to get this onto the radar screen. We not only need any financial support you may be able to offer or find, but also your influence. If you are to, if we're to continue offering sobering services, we simply must have funding restored until more permanent funding can be secured. I ask that you enter into discussions with the Board of County Commissioners and any other interested parties in an effort to find a solution so that we can continue providing these critical services. Thank you very much for your time and for your support in the past and in the future.
Thank you. Next is Lauren Sears, followed by Paula Goodbar.
Not from here. Talk.
Talk right into it, is what I would say. Get close.
I'd like to recognize the heroics amongst yourself as well. I appreciate what it took me to get here and have to say, I really want to recognize your own heroism in coming and doing this day after day, day in and day out. I really appreciate it. It's not the easiest thing in the world. My name is Lauren Sears, and I'm from the Crest neighborhood. I have a petition actually that was circulated and signed by about 28 or 29 now of my fellow neighbors concerning hazards and dangers that we feel need correction in the Crest Drive. Given the construction has been done and so on, but as these streets are subject to actual wear and tear, they're deteriorating rapidly, and certain design inadequacies that were not thought out in advance are suffering and become bigger and bigger hazards. So we feel that these functional inadequacies are going to continue to grow as hazards and need to be addressed. There are incidents already occurring. There's deterioration continuing from large trucks. 4J and LTD have expressed doubts about the safety of these roads for their uses. And so I think we have fair warning now that more serious accidents and injuries are ahead if we don't do something about it. Worst-case scenario, a van full of schoolchildren could overturn in these ditches, and that's possible. We have to plan for the possibilities. As you know, you're legally liable if you ignore known traffic dangers. And so we're here to put on the public record that we see these hazards, dangers, that need attention. We're hoping that you will start the process. Those sections that are now finished fall under operations and maintenance and have to be addressed with those budgets and those crews. And there may be something that we can do about correcting in advance the same faults on the part that of Story, Crest, and Friendly that are just now starting reconstruction. I talked to Betty Taylor about this. She's my ward counselor, and she suggested, what do we want you to do? And so we sat down and made a list after surveying as much as we could, 10 items that need attention on the road, what the problems come from, and some suggested actions for repairing them. We're not here to argue about why it shouldn't have been done this way and what else should have been done. The fact is, it's there, and there are problems, and we would like to address that with you. I have this list. I'll submit this to you. I also have the petition, what it's originally stated there. The good news is, I think, most of these alterations that are called for are not high-tech. A jackhammer.
Thank you.
River rock.
I'm sorry you're going to have...
And gravel.
Thank you. Thanks very much. We'll look at it. Paula Goodbar is next, followed by David Miller.
I am Paula Goodbar, and I live and work in Eugene. I am a member of the Eugene Storefront Art Project, and I am a citizen concerned about empty buildings and blight in the core of downtown Eugene. The Eugene Storefront Art Project is a group of almost 400 local and regional artists that have come together to explore the idea of temporarily using vacant storefronts for revitalization. Any spaces made available could be transformed by allowing a local artist to set up temporary pieces of art or sculpture within the space next to the windows, or by adding poster art against the windows in these vacant properties. The idea for filling up empty Eugene storefronts with art started late last year, but the Eugene Storefront Art Project is only three months old. Our group is currently applying for grant funding, and we have been gathering donations to help with our expenses. We are applying for nonprofit status, have registered with the state, and have a Eugene address and website. We are here tonight to introduce our group and our ideas that we hope can beautify downtown Eugene. Storefront art engages the public, inspires minds, while it elevates a community's cultural and financial standing in the world. Visually stimulating art exhibits help to create a self-environment, attract a sophisticated clientele, and court the tourist. Storefront art creates a buzz that the public and media will embrace and support, keeping areas looking vital and culturally exciting. The Eugene Storefront Art Project is eager to work with property owners to make this happen as quickly, economically, and rewarding as possible. By using art to create a vibrant downtown, together, we can demonstrate to the citizens of Eugene a commitment to the arts. An agreement with the Storefront Art Project can provide property owners with an extraordinary marketing and public relations opportunity. By beautifying empty properties with art, property owners call attention to potential tenants and buyers. These exhibits can discourage graffiti, loitering, and other destructive activities, and can be featured in art walks and tours as examples of Eugene's unique cultural atmosphere. We are hoping tonight that the City Council can find ways to help us end the creeping urban blight that has taken over our downtown. If Eugene truly is the world's greatest city of the arts and outdoors, we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is David Miller, followed by Mark Gunther.
I am David P. Miller, and I live and work in Eugene. I am a member of the Eugene Storefront Art Project and a citizen concerned about the empty buildings and urban blight in the core of downtown. We are a group of concerned citizens calling ourselves the Eugene Storefront Art Project, dedicated to creating temporary art projects to enliven the downtown area. The Eugene Storefront Art Project has a mission statement: to place short-term exhibits in empty Eugene-area storefronts to demonstrate Eugene's commitment to the arts while beautifying downtown areas and allowing artists a unique canvas. To promote new art and improve the quality of life while creating an artistic environment and making vacant properties more desirable. To facilitate happenings and events in vacant storefronts, urban spaces, and community-oriented businesses featuring the work of artists in different media, such as visual, performance, and music. Also, to develop ways to use empty buildings as temporary studio spaces available to artists until rented. The Eugene Storefront Art Project wants to add color to the static downtown atmosphere. It is our hope that the cultural, financial rewards will follow. We are approaching property owners with a simple, quick, and inexpensive plan to use art as a way to improve the quality of life for downtown residents. By adding storefront art, property owners could greatly improve the perceptions and attitudes about a downtown in development. An interesting and beautiful storefront invites more pedestrian traffic for neighboring businesses and helps to create a buzz about the area that the public and media will embrace and support. Art can be an inspirational marketing tool for properties to find permanent tenants, more properties lease and sell shortly after installations are placed after having been vacant for a long period of time. Vibrant storefront art exhibits helps keep looking vital and culturally exciting, inspiring other local retailers to improve their own spaces. Dynamic and colorful storefront art helps bring to life in a blighted area and helps reduce crime and graffiti. Success with storefront art projects cultivates the existing art community, giving purpose and meaning to established and potential members of the art community. If Eugene is truly the world's greatest city of the arts and outdoors, our leaders can take this inexpensive and rewarding step towards that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mark Gunther, followed by Misha Linwood.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Mark Gunther. I work in Eugene. I'm a citizen of Junction City, and I'm a member of the Eugene Storefront Art Project and a citizen concerned about the lack of art and history in downtown Eugene. Other cities in Oregon are vibrant historical districts. Albany, Portland, Salem, Newport, Florence are a few examples of the economic benefits that historical architecture brings to their cities. Eugene has an historical museum located in a neighborhood outside of the downtown core, and if citizens want to see what old Eugene once looked like, there are only pictures and artifacts. Due to some shortsighted decisions made a long time ago, many of our historical buildings have disappeared. A few have remained in the north part of downtown, bisected by the Eugene Hilton and the Holt Center, but the crown jewel of this neighborhood is about to be sold, and I'm talking about the Eugene Post Office at 5th and Willamette. There's been a trickle of news about the sale of our historic Eugene Post Office, but not a lot of details. There's a "for sale" sign, no details about the preservation of this historical post office building. This makes the future of the structure uncertain. Local historians and preservationists are worried about what could happen, though they are hopeful that the public's ability to visit this building will not be restricted even if it is sold. Bob Hart, the Executive Director of the Lane County Historical Society and Museum, said, "Eugene isn't exactly on the vanguard of communities that have preserved a lot of its history. To help preserve and utilize one of those buildings so it's not knocked down is very important." The Eugene Post Office was placed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1985 because of its unique architecture and lobby on the first floor, where postal clerks helped the public from behind a counter, and 2,600 post office boxes lined the marble-covered walls. Two Works Progress Administration murals painted by Portland artist Carl Morris were installed in the lobby in 1943. If the building is sold, public access to the murals and post office lobby is in jeopardy. I've written to Congressman DeFazio about this twice. I have not received a reply yet. Artist Jerry Ross has formed a citizens committee seeking to purchase the historical downtown post office for use as a City of Eugene Art and Historical Museum. This is a grassroots, artist-based committee. If we could turn this building into an art and history museum, we would see all of the auto association books mention this as one of the top go-to spots in the Northwest. The opportunity for using this building as a hub for old-town revitalization is slipping away. If Eugene truly is the world's greatest city of the arts and outdoors, then downtown needs a place for public art and history. Thank you.
Thank you. Misha Linwood is next, followed by Sherri Franzen.
I'm Misha Linwood. I live and work in Eugene. I'm a member of the Eugene Storefront Art Project and a citizen concerned about empty buildings in our downtown core. Many cities around the nation, including Portland, have been using storefront art to beautify downtown areas and allow artists a unique canvas to make vacant properties more desirable. Cities such as Boston, Pittsburgh, Baltimore, and San Jose have already enjoyed the positive impact of adding art to empty storefronts. Pop-up art has boosted local business, sparked tourism, and assisted government agencies. It is an important collaboration between the city and local artists, creating a future of support between both. Louis R. Council, Director of Cultural Affairs in the San Francisco Arts Commission, said, "Cities have historically flourished whenever creative individuals are encouraged to share their vision with their fellow citizens and promote dialogue and social interaction." At the end of October 2009, San Francisco Mayor Gavin Newcomb launched Art in Storefronts, a collaboration between the Office of Economic and Workforce Development and the San Francisco Arts Commission that fills 20 unused storefronts in four neighborhoods with the work of local artists. The goal was twofold: to spruce up areas that have seen high vacancy rates and to help support artists in a down economy. Statistics show that millions of dollars have already flowed back into these previously deserted neighborhoods. The Hartford, Connecticut Business Improvement District filled 12 previously unoccupied downtown Hartford storefront spaces with the awesomest art thing ever, an exhibition funded by a grant from a city grant. Nine Hartford artists were selected to install works ranging from full-scale three-dimensional pieces to interactive art to graphic art. The unique projects improved the physical appearance of the buildings and streets and emphasized the vibrancy and marketability of the city of Hartford. Each space utilized for project is the lease, and the project intends to create additional visibility for developers and attract merchants interested in filling the storefronts permanently. Palm Springs is using storefront art as a partial cure. Is expected to adopt a plan requiring vacant stores to hang paintings, photographs, and Hollywood stars. If Eugene is... Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sherri Franzen is next, followed by Duncan Rhodes.
I am Sherri Franzen, and I live and work in Eugene. I'm a member of the Eugene Storefront Art Project and a citizen concerned about the many empty storefronts that litter downtown Eugene. Some of these stores have been empty for years, and one has been deserted for over 10 years. If I owned a house on Broadway and left it deserted and boarded up, certainly there would be some consequences. But because these empty buildings are owned by powerful developers, somehow they suffer no repercussions. This following here was written by, written last week on Craigslist. Quote, "Right now, a vacant storefront is nothing but a piece of glass. It has no character, no interest, no nothing. So people walking down the street say, 'Why do I want to be here in Eugene? There's nothing to look at.'" Close quote. The Eugene storefront has made over a dozen proposals to property owners in the last two months and has successfully placed art in two storefronts: the ElCoge Lane Council of Government property at 857 Willamette and the Beam property at 62 West Broadway. Our group is also negotiating with Beam and Steve Master about art in the Center Court and Taco Time buildings. Most other, most other owners of empty stores downtown have declined, ignored, or stalled Most other owners of empty stores downtown have declined, ignored, or stalled our efforts. It seems that some property owners are taking matters into their own hands, saying that there will be art in their windows, installing small exhibits, and using delays and hesitation to avoid letting us participate in our downtown beautification efforts. Our proposals to property owners let them select their own art from local submissions. Core members of the Eugene storefront art project evaluate the proposed space, working with the artists and owner to determine the best exhibits appropriate to the type of space. Waivers are drawn up, signed, and faxed with insurance forms with the property owner's requirements and concerns factored into any discussion of liability issues. Times and dates are secured for installation with specific procedure for installation, maintenance, and removal of exhibit within timeframe established. Any concerns can be added to our agreements, yet for some reason, property owners find it beneficial to leave dead properties downtown. I feel that there should be a carrot-and-stick approach to downtown property owners, perhaps a gold star for those that fill up empty storefronts, and a fine against owners who leave properties vacant for a period of time. The simplest solution is to consider the exchange of local art for storefront space. It costs nothing and is immediate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Duncan Rhodes is next, followed by Drix.
I'll be quick. Don't take your time. Third second, forty-five seconds, I'm done. Thank you for letting me speak, Mayor. I'm Duncan Rhodes. I live in the city of Eugene in the Whittaker District, Ward 7. I've lived in Eugene about a year, and I am a member of Connecting Eugene, a local advocacy group. And I'm interested, I've heard talk that the old Coca-Cola property is going to be sold to ORI, and I'd like you to take the remainder of my time, which could be two minutes or so, if you could explain to me in simple language what the public process is involving this transfer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Drix, followed by Daniel Lewis Fromherz, it looks like?
Fromherz.
Fromherz, thank you.
Wow, this is comfortable. Reminds me of my DJ dates. It's all for you, Gene. Thank you. My name is Drix. I live on High Street in Eugene, in the West University Neighbors. We call it the One. It's a great neighborhood. I love it. I love living there. This time of year, sofas start to bloom, and I found one yesterday. It was by the dumpster. The kids move out, and we're at the University, so I tried to get it in my attic, and it wouldn't fit to the door. And I was shoving and pushing and twisting and recruiting people coming down the street, and we couldn't get it to the door. So I put the door back on the hinges and figured it's time to post it on Craigslist. And right while I was taking photos, someone walked by, and he wound up buying the sofa from me. So I sold it, and he wound up being a great guy, and he just moved here from Kentucky. And he picked Eugene because, one, it's as far from Kentucky as you can get, and number two, he saw us on Wikipedia. He researched, and he picked our little community here as the place to be. And he was a very bright man, so I think that's not a mistake. Also, I'd like to acknowledge that Conan O'Brien picked Eugene to be the one city where you launch his U.S. tour. He's very bright. And do those people pick Eugene by mistake? No, I don't think so. I think we really are a bright town. We just don't celebrate it enough. So that's why I am here, because I was asked to celebrate it. I've won a lot of awards in my time, and they usually wind up sitting on your shelf, and when you move, you take less and less with you. But I've never been asked to design an award, so... Because our city... I don't know what he's doing now. Our city has put together on... Well, we... Yes, for volunteers. I volunteer all the time. You can volunteer very quietly and pick up litter that's not your own, or you can volunteer financially and donate to worthwhile causes, or you can just do anything you want. But you don't have to be paid for it, because that's how a community works. We work because we all live here. Even you guys live here. We all... This is how it works. But like they said in The Wizard of Oz, you need to have something to show for it. And the Tin Man got that star on his chest, and we get this award. And, you know, I designed this award because, well, doesn't it look great? Makes you wonder, what is it? Well, that's half the step of the award, getting here. It's put together with things from my neighborhood. There's a beer cup, which we are very famous for in my neighborhood. We have the most important... Yes, I do. But I designed something... Talk faster, Drix, the buzzer will get you. Designed something I'd never seen before, and you can only do this on a volunteer award. And I'm going to show everyone. You guys are watching, but don't tell anyone, because no one's watching anyway. But this has got Volunteer Now feature in there. When you present it to someone, and Merrick, you gotta press... See, this little ball falls off, and you go, "Oh, no!" And they pick it up, and they hand it back to you. Well, they just volunteered. See? So whatever you show this to someone or present it or anything, it's got that, "Oh, volunteer now. Well, thank you very much." So that's just unique, and so is Eugene. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Drix. No clapping, please. Even if he deserves it, no clapping. Daniel Fromherz, please, followed by Gar Cutler.
We had a good laugh. And now, you councilors, I've written each one of you...
Would you identify yourself, please?
Pardon me?
Give your name and where you live.
My name is Daniel Lewis Fromherz, and I own a home in Ms. Solomon's district. I bought it about, starting three years ago.
Thank you.
And I'm pretty happy there.
Good.
I'm pretty happy with Eugene overall. I'm here tonight to ask you folks to support the repeal of the federal law for "Don't Ask, Don't Tell," and that's the gay and lesbian issue of the military. Our own Congressman DeFazio has been a supporter, one of 191 of the congressmen who have been cosponsors. Anyway, I've written each one of you a personal letter explaining a little bit about what, but I thought I would add a little bit more. As a non-commissioned officer in the United States Army for 23 years, I had the pleasure of commanding several units when I was in the military. And when I discovered that some of my men, or, and then later on, women, who happened to be gay, I found that they were some of the most forthcoming people that I'd ever had the pleasure of serving with, because they were very upfront with their sexuality, but they were also very good with their jobs. And I think it's a crime that we don't have more opportunity for the gays and lesbians. I'm sure that you all know at least one or two, even in the city, who are very upfront and are very well-controlled with their activities. Maybe not. But anyway, I'm here to support the repeal, and with the help of the state of Florida and also Congressman DeFazio's office, I have written a "Whereas" resolution that I would like the city to take a look at and to support. And I've also got a meeting on the 27th of April with the county commissioners, who have already seen this resolution, and they've encouraged me to bring it to the city council and also to some of the other smaller towns to see what kind of support it can get. It's long overdue. Gays and lesbians have been allowed to serve in the military.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks very much.
Other towns?
Gar Cutler is next, followed by Mary Salinas.
Mayor Piercy and council members, my name is Gar Cutler. I live in South Eugene on Horizon Road off of Crest Drive. I'd like to speak about Crest Drive, what Lauren Sears already spoke so well about. I would like to support him, but I don't have to repeat what he said, but the road has some problems. It pinches very narrowly. In one place, it's listed as a one-lane road. It has tight corners. It is designed for like it was a private drive. Crest Drive is a collector's street, despite what some people say. It serves 26 other streets in South Eugene. It serves many streets that have no other way to enter the city. It has a very steep drop-off on the right, on the north side, where a car could easily get mired and slide off the road. It has a bizarre swale on the south side that will only collect trash and dirt and weeds. There are no off-road shoulders. Their turnaround at Crest and Lincoln is bizarrely off-center. Accordingly, I earnestly hope that in the further construction and reconstruction of Crest Drive, we've waited so many years for, will ameliorate some of these really rather radical decisions for a street that will, in the future, undoubtedly serve many more people than it does now. So thinking to the future, one should prepare for the future, rather than making the street such a very private, slow country road. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mary Salinas, followed by Tom Kems.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I'll listen for the buzzer. My name is Mary Salinas. I'm a spokesperson for the homeless. About 12 years ago, I was homeless for two and a half years. Out of a knee-jerk reaction, I started speaking up for the homeless after about six months. Took me a while to really sink in to the reality of being homeless. But it was a knee-jerk reaction, and I started speaking for the homeless. After a while, the civic forum came to me and asked me if I'd be a spokesperson for the homeless. I went, "Yes." So that's where I got spokesperson for the homeless. Now I'm here for two years, and my first day here, I said to my partner, "There's something wrong. There are too many homeless people here, and they're too sick." And then I wasn't going to get involved, but eventually I do, because they're in the paper constantly. I witnessed them digging in the trash. It hurts my heart, and I've been working for them. In the city I was in, we got a new homeless shelter. We got a new soup kitchen. We got a huge building full of clean clothes, toys, pots and pans. I try not to say these same things too often, but something good happened, and I want the same things here in Eugene. I want a safe homeless shelter for women and children, and particularly for young boys. In this city, the mission has a special building for women and children, but not for boys. And parents have talked to me, their concerns about their sons. And the mission reported $8 million on their tax forms this year. They made $8 million last year. Food for Lane County operated on $2.9 million. So the mission is rich. Everybody gives. Everybody loves the homeless. That's what I understood when I was homeless. Wait a minute, something's wrong with this picture. Many people care about the homeless. Many people give in the whole country billions every year, millions in one city, but the homeless don't get it. If you think about it, look at them. They get nothing. So I understood that if maybe I could get people to start thinking about the reality of it, that they would help. And here in Eugene, I'm asking for a homeless shelter, a new homeless shelter for the homeless. And I know there are problems downtown. Wawa, that's a problem in most cities. And you can move them around, but that's all you can do unless you help them. So this is my overall solution, and I have spoken to Senator Wyland's assistant this week for an hour. She listened. Fay Stewart, county commissioner, listened to me for an hour. I am valid. Oregon's attorney general talked to me this, about two months ago when he was in town. He has relatives who, the entire family, tried to help, tried to help for years. They've given up because it seems an impossible... So State Representative Barnhart on the phone, listened to me for an hour. I couldn't believe it. But I do have valid... Make chronic homelessness a disability.
Thank you.
And bring the homeless in.
Thank you.
It's a pure, clean solution.
The last person up is Tom Kems.
Yeah, personally, I want to thank all of you. I have met with, I think, everybody in this room at least.
Would you introduce yourself first?
Sorry. Tom Kems, downtown resident. Thank you, Andrea. But I think I have met with all of you at one point or another, and you guys have all listened to me, and it seems like sometimes like your responses, which I do appreciate. And thank you all for the amazing amount of time that you actually put into the city. So I do appreciate that. And now here I go and just kind of spin all that around. I was part of the Downtown Task Force on Security, and the presentation that was made on Monday, I actually have to tell you, I was really disappointed in. It seems like we, again, are taking small steps where larger steps should be taken. It really kind of seems like the same plan that we had last year, with a couple more police officers down there, and the addition of a cleanup crew if you are caught doing things downtown that you shouldn't be doing. It seems too small, quite honestly. And we've heard over and over again so many examples of things that could work. The downtown beautification, these guys have a great idea. It's not going to cost anybody a dime, and we still have landlords that don't want to do it for whatever reason, or for no reason at all, just to stand in the way. We have heard over and over and over again at these public meetings, building owners should be held responsible. You guys took the step in front of the library, which cleaned it up instantly for no smoking, no loitering. It works, and I think that if you guys can mandate that type of legislation, then I think that we can go a step further and hold people accountable for the center of our city. And I think that a really big step that you guys as a council can do, or a city manager, if you can do it, you guys have empty storefronts of your own in parking lots. Fill them. This is a great project, and it doesn't cost you guys a dime. So if we can make that happen, that would be great. Back to the Downtown Task Force, it seems like it is the same scenario as last year. And what I have heard, and yeah, I'm one of those guys who watches these things on the internet, you guys have made headway, or claiming some small victories in what you guys have done downtown. And I have to give it to Pete Kearns. He has done a lot to make that happen. Thank God for him. But I really kind of think that half the time I see you guys standing in the way. You have good ideas out there, and somebody throws up a, like, "Let's have a study. Let's have something that makes this stall for a little bit longer." Is that really necessary? I know that everybody in this city is scared to death of litigation, so if you guys aren't going to legislate, then let's regulate. When it comes to the homeless and the panhandlers downtown, they're not there for food. I know who's there for food. I give them food. They're there for booze. And if you really want to help the homeless, don't give them money for booze. Let's legislate. Let's legalize them.
All right. Thank you, everybody. I'm going to close the public forum and ask councilors if they have comments. Counselor Ortiz.
I want to thank everybody for coming down tonight, taking time out of your busy schedule to come and share your thoughts with us. Buckley Bob, thank you for coming and sharing your concerns with us again. I know this is an ongoing, every year, you know, you guys do such great work out there, and I hope that we can find, figure out through, you know, the Human Services Commission how to keep your doors open, because I think the city would really be impacted if we didn't have a place to take up our community members who are drinking too much or imbibing in other things that aren't good. Thanks to the group that came for the downtown block. I think it's a good idea. I don't know what we can do to continue the conversation, but I'd be more than willing to hear about it and to be a part of it. Crest Drive, you know, this is going to be an ongoing... Dr. Cutler, it's good to see you out in the community. Dr. Cutler is a physician, has been retired for a couple of years, so it's good to see you, sir. But I just, you know, we... It was not designated a collector, because that's what the community there came and shared with us. So, I mean, because we really worked hard with that community, I think, for, what was it, three years? Did it feel like, three years, to get that designed? And so I know nothing's perfect, but thank you for sharing your thoughts, and the other gentlemen, too, you know, the things that are doable. I feel like right now, we're in a... We've really come a long way from when I first got on council with roads. It was a standard of what we did with all roads, were the same, curbs and gutters and sidewalks for every road that was fixed. And now we're doing some innovative things, thanks to the city manager, allowing... allowing that kind of thought process to happen. Because like in my neighborhoods, we have a lot of roads that aren't... Can't think of the word. They're not roads. They're just dirt. And instead of, you know, and they're dead-end streets. You know, they go nowhere. Why should people have to pay for curbs and gutters? But we're starting to do some innovative overlays and some different ways of doing things. So, maybe we can look at that along that way. And then, the gentleman who talked about the Coca-Cola factory, were you going to respond to that, city manager? Because I don't know that we have anything to say about that. Is it U of O property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, thank you. And I think that was all. I think I didn't miss anybody. If I missed you, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you. First of all, a big thank you to everybody for coming. To Bob Richards, I also would say that I was a big supporter of the idea in that original swap a couple of years ago. And certainly, if a similar type of arrangement can be worked out with the county, again, this time during budget, I'd be willing to support it. And I'll speak with folks at the county that I can to see if that's possible. But certainly, the services provided at Buckley House are critical to public safety. That's not a debatable proposition, and anybody who works in public safety will tell you so. So, making certain that your operation continues in good stead is important to me, too. So, I'll do what I can to help. It was good to see Lauren Sears here again, too. He and I used to work together once upon a time, many years ago, and I haven't seen him for a long time. He brought up an interesting point, city manager, or more accurately, city attorney. He said that we can be legally liable for known traffic damages. And I'd love to hear further amplification, perhaps maybe in a memo on that. On the downtown issue, and Tom, I agree, I think we should do more than we're doing. I'm glad we're doing what we are. I, too, wish we had a couple of other things that we could pass quickly. I am happy with what we've put forward as a good first step, or by no means done. So, I'd love to talk with you further on some of the other ideas that you brought up towards the end of what you said. Thanks.
Counselor Taylor.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you for coming. This was really inspirational tonight, I thought, as our public forums so often are. The art, storefront art is such a good idea. And I was really glad to hear... I didn't realize the post office was already for sale. We should try to do whatever we can about that. In Nashville, the old post office is an art museum. So, it's a good... And that's what you suggested. It's a good idea. It all goes together. We do have a garden going in, which is a temporary garden at the moment. And I think if we combine temporary art displays and temporary gardens in all of our empty spaces, that really takes care of a lot of problems. And I hope that we can do whatever we can to facilitate that. I wonder if you've talked to the Downtown Neighborhood Association. That's a good idea. And it's okay to nod, yes. Good. I hope they will be helpful, too. And I think we're close to charging fees for vacant property, and maybe we can do something more. But there should be a way to ask people to do something there. Even the parts that don't look that bad, Broadway Place, I walked by yesterday, and I see empty storefronts there. As someone mentioned, we do have some property downtown, too. The city does. And maybe we could put some art in our property. And maybe we could help to push people who have property to do it in some way. As far Crest Drive, I don't know what to say. It was such a long process, and I think that there were good reasons for the things that people wanted. Maybe we should have a work session to talk about whether there are some things that need to be modified. I don't know. I've driven on it, and it seems okay to me, but I'm not interested in driving fast on it. And I know that there... I've heard from people who are very happy and people who are very unhappy. Especially, there's that one spot, I think, at Lincoln, that people are unhappy about. But to me, it seems like 33rd Street is more difficult than Crest at present. But maybe we should talk about it anyway at some point. And a homeless shelter, I've been saying forever that we do need a homeless shelter, and it's something we should push the state for. It's not... In my opinion, it's not a local problem. People go from one place to another. There should be state-supported homeless shelters, which don't have to be fancy, just a place to get out of the weather and take a shower. But thank you very much. Bye. Bye, I said. What am I talking about?
Counselor Solomon.
Thank you for everyone for coming down tonight. Let's see, I had a couple of things I wanted to comment on. Drix, thank you for your volunteer work. I saw you at Project Homeless Connect, volunteering and serving meals, and I really appreciated seeing you there. Andrea, thanks for asking about the ORI and Coca-Cola issue. I was going to ask about that. As to Crest Drive, I think the only people that are happy with Crest Drive is the small, exclusive neighborhood group that actually put together the proposal that we wrongly approved. I was the one lone vote against it. But I do hope... It's just all wrong. And I do hope that... I appreciate Mike's question for a memo on our legal liability there. But is it possible that staff could go out and evaluate any wear and tear on the project? It's a pretty new project, but has there been a lot of wear and tear on the part that's been completed already? And then, I liked Betty's question as well, is are there modifications we can make going into the second phase that wouldn't put it off court and wouldn't necessarily delay the project? Might cost a little bit more, but are there modifications that we can make that would make it safer? And then, as to the Downtown Task Force, I think Mr. Kemus was right. There are storefronts that we own, and so, we ought to be participating in that program. And so, I hope that you will move that forward, city manager. And then, I believe we have... You have, Betty, made numerous attempts for us to talk about what to do about the owners of these vacant buildings. And I don't think that we've really talked about it. Is that on our calendar? Can we schedule that for a work session? Do I need to do a poll?
Free parking. Free parking.
No, no. No, please don't do that.
Don't encourage it.
No. Please. Somebody should do... You should do a poll, just to be sure you've got... That's what we do.
Okay. So, I'll send out a poll, then, asking my fellow councillors if they would like to have a work session on what we can do to either legislate or regulate the owners of vacant store buildings in the downtown core to do something about it.
City manager.
What I was going to mention is, as part of the downtown public safety initiative that we are moving forward on, one of the items the council did ask us to bring back were proposed ordinances around including vacant buildings as part of the assessment through the DEI process. And so, that is something that's coming back. That's more narrowly defined than what's been talked about tonight.
Okay. All right. Maybe that... I think that'll help me to maybe rephrase my poll. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. It's always great when you have a stimulating public forum. As you can see, this one was. It doesn't always happen. And so, I'm very appreciative of everyone who came and offered up provocative ideas and caused us to think about things. Buckley House is one of those perfect examples of something that bridges both public safety and human service. It really is in both worlds, and it demonstrates, I think, a very powerful need. So, I think we need to figure out a way to stabilize that and support it if we can. Crest Drive is interesting in that they went through an entire process for multiple years. And my impression was, it was a reasonable process. It was a collaborative process. It was an inclusive process. It's a good process. But sometimes, what perhaps the lesson is, you can go through a great process, and the product is still something that needs to be talked about. And I think we still need to talk about the outcome on Crest Drive, what we need to do there. I have talked to the folks in Public Works and have been told, have been assured, that whatever the construction work that is done on that project is essential work. They're ripping it up and replacing it, the underlayment, all of that stuff, is going to be necessary, whatever the final outcome is going to be, whether it's this white, or this white, or has this, or has that. The work they're doing is essential work. So, it's not like they'll do work, and then you have to tear it out or replace it with something else. And I found that very comforting, that whatever happens ultimately with Crest Drive, the work that's being done now, we'll be working toward that eventual outcome. And we want to figure out exactly what that should be. And then, the downtown project, I think, is fabulous. I think it's just a tremendous idea to do that, and the notion of having a conversation about vacant properties downtown. And I will agree, Counselor...
Taylor.
Taylor, down here, has been talking about that for quite a while, and should get the credit for at least getting a conversation going. And we should all figure out what we can do effectively with that. We can move, I think, in a productive direction, but it may not move as fast as some people would like us to. But as long as we keep moving, that's the main thing. And I am pleased to see that there's a lot of movement coming out of both the council and the city that maybe hasn't been happening for a long time. May not be as fast as some people like, but at least there's some kind of movement going on, and I'm very appreciative of that. So, I'm encouraged that we'll get there at some speed on a variety of issues. But I am very glad to see a lot of the different topics that came up, and it was very great food for thought.
Counselor Poling.
Well, I'd just like to thank Counselors Ortiz and Solomon for asking to follow up with the gentleman's questions in reference to the ORI. Just to make sure we get the information from him and route him to the right person that can maybe answer his questions. And for the gentleman that spoke about the repealing the Don't Ask, Don't Tell law, if... I don't know. I didn't see if you passed a copy of that resolution off to our staff up front. But if you would make sure you leave it with Beth here, so we can get a copy of that, so we can look at the resolution that you've taken to the board of commissioners, so we can take a look at it also, I'd appreciate it. As far as Crest Drive is concerned, I have to agree with Counselor Pryor. You know, we went through three years of working with the citizens up there. And now that Phase One, I guess, is completed, and it has been up, and people have been running and driving on it for a while, you know, it wouldn't be a bad idea to go back and look at it again. I'm a little bit hesitant to just arbitrarily modify it. If we do have that discussion, it's imperative that we bring in the original group of citizens that was involved in that conversation, now that they've had a chance to see how it's working. Maybe they have some ideas also. But for us, just to arbitrarily change it and make modifications, I think, would be a disservice to them. We'd be going back on our word to them again. And I think we need to involve them in the conversation, if that's where the conversation is going to go.
Counselors Alinka.
Buckley Bob, thanks you for coming. I was on the Human Services Commission for seven or eight years. I understand the import of that service. It's critically important to this community. Very interested in some ideas, very supportive of that. Mr. City Manager, if you've got any ideas, more than happy to hear about them. I think the Eugene storefront art project is a great idea. I'd support it. I'm curious as to what we think the next steps might be. One might be getting us some of those ordinances from the other communities and pass them along to us, so we can see what they did. That would be very helpful. Crest Drive, interested in seeing Mr. Sears' 10 ideas. You gave that to the city manager, and we'll get copies of that. That's the one vote on the council, since I've been on the council, that I regret making. The Coca-Cola property is... I met with the U of O. It is indeed a U of O property. So, it's their process, they're a public agency, so they have to abide by the same rules as the other public agencies. It is within the Riverfront Research Park, however. So, in that regard, we'd have something to say about it. Otherwise, we wouldn't. Drix, always an inspiration. Thanks for the volunteer feature. I hadn't thought of that before. But most... Everything you say, I haven't thought of before. I also would be very interested in supporting the repeal of the Don't Ask, Don't Tell policy and the resolution. And then, finally, on the post office, I think that is one of our jewels. We have done a terrible job in this community of saving our heritage and our history, especially our buildings and architectural history. And I would hate to see it go away. I don't know that there's anything the city can do, but I would certainly like to see that stay as a historic building in the shape that it's in right now. And the back of the building can go away. As far as I'm concerned, it's just a giant warehouse. But the front of it is certainly a treasure, especially the murals.
We're going to round up this part of our public forum, part of our meeting. And I think you heard you actually got a high level of interest going from the council tonight. I suggest that you guys get Drix to work with you. No, I think Drix is an artist. I think he's got something to add to the conversation. I don't have much to add. I have the same interest that the rest of council has on a number of issues that have been brought up. I do want to say, though, that, just to tell you, that when the post office... We got notification that the post office might be sold. We sent a letter immediately saying how concerned we were about preserving that property. We sent it both to the postal service and to ask Congressman Navazio for help, which you've done, too. And the return from the post office was like, pretty much like, "We can do this." And that was kind of the answer. And as you have... I know, as you also said, that the Lane Historic Museum looked at it, and there are some issues around whether, with the adjoining property still being leased, whether it makes sense to do that. And if it's going to be for a couple of years, they want to continue using that downstairs for postal services, and they want to sell it and continue to use part of it, for at least the downstairs for postal services. So, that creates another challenge for somebody who's interested in it. I am guessing, I don't know this for sure, but I am guessing, in spite of the wonderful architecture and art, which I think is so important to preserve for our community, I'm betting it's not the most energy-efficient building. It probably has some issues that would be some hurdles to get over in terms of the usage of the building. But it's also got a historical designation. So, I think they're going to have to take care of the architecture and the art. I guess the question for us is to be sure the public has access to it. And if we can find a way for it to be used by the public, that's all the better. And Jerry Ross, a local artist, as you said, has indicated that he would encourage people to contact him and join with him in the effort to look for ways to purchase that property for the use of a... For a permanent collection of community art. So, I put his... That contact information on my Facebook page and invited people to join. So, I have a very high interest in that. I just don't know what our options would be. But I will also state that I do understand, we don't send mail the way we used to. Our world is totally changing in terms of postal service. So, I can also understand why the post office can't keep these big post office buildings all over the country, because we're just not communicating with each other in the same way as we have historically. So, thank you all very much for being here. We're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that's our consent calendar. And I understand from Mike, Andrea wants to pull B, C, and D. Is that correct? So, we're just going to put the... Nobody wants to pull A? So, just want to put A on the table.
Thank you, Mayor. Move the item remaining on the consent calendar.
Second. Moved in, seconded. So, that means we're addressing the approval of the city council minutes. And I believe Betty had one change that she sent in, right? We'll acknowledge that. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Ready to vote on that? Would you please vote on the consent calendar? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. So, now, we're going to go to approval of the tentative working agenda. Item B, Counselor Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a note that I'm going to be gone, and I had already submitted that, and it's not reflected in the consent agenda. I'm going to be in Southern California the week of 23th through the 29th. And there are several items I might ask of April. And I might ask to have them moved. And I just wanted to make sure that I had opportunity to give you all notice I was going to be gone, and that I might ask... I have reviewed the agenda. That hopefully, the city will think I have issues with, but I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want about the working agenda? Do you please...
Take the motion.
Is it... Do we have to do the... We'll do these separately now, because the way... Okay.
Move to approve.
No. No, that's what I was asking, you don't have to do that part.
Okay.
So would you please vote on item B?
What is your motion in favor?
Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. C, Counselor Ortiz?
Thank you. I just wanted to bring community's attention. I don't know if everyone in TV land, as Drix would say, is realizing that we are still managing to meet with these tough budget times, we were doing pretty good work as far as neighborhood matching grants, and I just looked over it, I don't want to go through each one of them individually, but I felt it was a really good combination of geographic specification, a lot of different ideas, and when I was reviewing the I S, it appeared to me that you were using the triple bottom line, which I think is really, really good, so I just wanted to acknowledge that this is good work, and I appreciate it.
The other comments, or on the item C?
Yeah.
No, okay, Counselor Zelenka?
I just wanted to comment that every time we do this, we get great ideas from the community, and this is just yet another group of, all of them were good ideas, I'm really supportive of this.
Okay, now I think we're ready to vote on this one. I see, would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Item D, Counselor Ortiz?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I was trying to read this, I didn't quite, so this is a motion, we're asking to approve an appointment to Lane Workforce Partnership Board. And I was just curious, you know, we, I don't know if this has been done with this process, but you know, like on the boards of commissioners, I know it's been opened some scaps here, but you know, we try and look at a geographic and a demographic background of who we appoint to these, and I don't know if this is, if they follow the same process, and so I was just curious about that. Not that I'll, you know, not vote to support it, but I was just wondering, since we have to, you know, to support whatever they recommend, I don't know if they're...
With their processes, because the way this works is they have a process of their own, where they put some names forward, they send them to me, and then I send it on, bring it to you, so that's how it works. If you have some concerns, yes, George?
They also have a requirement on their board to have certain members from different disciplines. It has to be divided up, you know, some from business, some from, you know, the type of businesses that they bring in. I believe they even have some from the tourism industry and elected officials as well, so it's not, it's not like our regular boards where it's taken strictly from citizens of Eugene, it's more of a, an occupational type diversity.
They have labor representatives, those kinds of...
That's fine, I would not, not vote to support it, I was just curious.
Okay, you ready to vote on this one? Would you please vote? Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. So now we are through with the consent calendar, we're on to item number four. Council President, would you put Resolution 5003 out?
I move to adopt Resolution 5003 in support of United States House of Representatives Bill 4812, the Local Jobs for America Act.
Moved in second, and Brendan, excuse me, do you want to say anything about that?
No, not unless you have any questions.
Okay. Counselor Zelenka?
I'm going to support this. I think this is a good resolution and a good act. A million jobs in the public and private sector, and prevent tax increases, stimulate local businesses, and funding for 50,000 on-the-job private sector training positions, and it has some safeguards in there, like not more than 5% of the funding can go for administration. So I think this is a good resolution, I intend to support it.
Counselor Solomon?
Well, it should surprise no one that I am just fundamentally opposed to this particular act or resolution. It's just, in my opinion, it's just simply another attempt to spend our way out of a recession. I believe that is one of the premises of this act, is to help us get through a recession, and spending our way out of it is certainly not the way to do it. It's only a two-year provision, so whatever we manage to save is not, there's no guarantee that we're going to be any better off in two years. So I mean, I oppose this, I oppose previous bailouts that have happened, and I just think this is fiscally irresponsible.
Counselor Clark?
I certainly would be willing to support something whose goals were listed, wow, as these are, because I support the goals, I just don't actually think that this bill, before the Congress, will accomplish them and agree with everything that Counselor Solomon said. I'm not one who, I think it's very clear that the Keynesian economic model has failed in this regard, as we continue in further into the hole, and I don't think you can spend your way out of a recession this way. So I'll be voting against it.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. I will be enthusiastically supporting it. I think it's, we are in danger, we've just heard from the city manager of having to lay off public employees. I think it's very appropriate that this is coming up just at the time when we're honoring city employees. And I especially like bullet number six on, well, the fact sheet is somewhere in your, in your packet, I think, but each city can use up to 50% of the funding to retain employees that might otherwise lose their jobs, and I think that's one of the best provisions that we could help, keep people from losing their jobs. It's a lot easier to do that than it is to try to get jobs again once they've lost them. And it will be on funding like C B D G, and the, most of the money comes just to the city, very little for administration, and I think that we should do everything we can to see that this is passed. When I asked Senator Merkley a question about the prospects, he did say that it isn't all set yet, and we need to let him know, we need to let all our representatives know what we think should be included in the bill, and I think it's very important that we do that. Thank you.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you. Do we, you know, it's going to be 37 and a half billion a year, right, for two years, is that the correct, the way it's going to work? Do we have any idea how much Oregon will get of that? Is there any, I know, I know it's kind of, what's the formula, but surely there must be some rough guides that help you guesstimate a kind of a range of what Oregon might reasonably expect, and then maybe what Eugene could reasonably expect?
Well, Mayor Piercy, Counselor Brown, I did try to figure that out. As Counselor Taylor stated, it's based on some sort of the same formula allocation as the Community Development Block Grant. However, the formula's different. There, there are two formulas, they calculate them both, and the city of Eugene receives whichever is higher. We received in our last grant, $1.5 million. This particular grant weighs 50% of the formula to the city's unemployment rate. We are, as you know, above the state average, and the state is above the national average, so in that one particular instance, our high unemployment rate is actually going to benefit us. We, 25% is the poverty level, and 25% is the population. Looking at it that way, it's not exactly the same as either of the formulas in the C D B G, but we're looking at about a million to a million five to Eugene. What the rest of the state would get would depend on their unemployment rate, their population, and their poverty level.
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I mean, you know, you look at it, and it looks kind of impressive at first, and then when you boil it down, what we're actually going to get, and it's kind of unimpressive. I mean, that's, we're going to maybe be able to train 10 people and hire two and a half teachers and hire 1/20th of a policeman? I mean, if you kind of do the math and start dividing.
Actually, if I could say something...
But I, you know, anything is better than nothing. I will support it, but it just...
Brendan?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Brown, the $75 billion that's divided up and distributed directly to cities 50,000 or above is one pot of money. There are several other pots of money within the proposed bill right now. One pot of money is $23 billion for educational jobs, $1.18 billion to put law enforcement officers on the street, $500 million to hire and train firefighters. And of the money that we receive, we can use, like Counselor Taylor said, up to 50% of that to retain or rehire employees that have been let go, but we can also use up to 25% of it to provide to community organizations that provide services to the community. So there are different buckets of money and different things that can be done with the money. And one of the things that the I G R committee directed is the request to Congressman DeFazio that he co-sponsor this bill with Congressman Wu and Blumenauer, who are already co-sponsors of this bill, so I just wanted to note that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Is there a calculation of what it will cost the state of Oregon? Because the federal taxes collected will certainly come from Oregon as well. Well, not, so I'm wondering if we're 1% of the population, that means at least, what, $370 million of it will come from Oregon, and I wonder if we'll get all of that back? And as well, I would wonder what the additional cost would be for that money that could have been employed to grow businesses in Oregon? So I think I've beat this point absolutely to death. Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka?
I heard two interesting pieces of information today. One was that the panel of experts on the economy, or panel of experts, economists, determined that the starting point of the recession was in the summer of 2007, and has bottomed out probably in the fall of 2009, is on its way up during the Obama administration. And the second point was that the Dow Jones Industrial Average has increased 3,000 points in the last 15 months. I guess that's a funny definition of failure.
So we will have our different points of view on this, and I don't, and should I need to vote on this? I will enthusiastically support it, wanting jobs and maintaining opportunities for people in our area. So, given that, will you please vote? Six in favor and two in opposition, it passes. Thank you all, and that concludes our business for this evening.